Pursuant to the Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, The Public Laws of 1975, this meeting was sent to the Adware Bar Press on September 1st, 2021, and has been duly advertised in the Adware Bar Press, the issue of September 3rd, 2021. All municipal clerks of the townships and the boroughs within the regional high school district has been notified, and the requirements and the postings of the notice has been sent on September 1st, 2021. Please rise with me to this pledge of allegiance.
But my people, you have the United States of America, and you are one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mrs. Ischano, are there any changes to the executive agenda tonight?
Yes, there's none. In addition to the items that were listed on the agenda that was printed prior to the meeting, in box number three, the board also discussed matters involving student discipline and staff-student health issues. The board also discussed, under box number seven, litigation matters, including the following four matters: Matter under document number 2018-27533, 2021-3432442, 2021-51259, and 2021-51259A.
Okay. Now I have a motion to approve the minutes of July 15th, 2021, with the corrections, and October 14th, regular meeting. Motion?
Move. Second.
Mrs. Capiello. Mrs. Capiello and Mrs. Higley. Any discussion? If no discussion, now I have a roll call.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Higley?
Yes.
Mrs. Ladd?
Yes.
Mr. Messinger? Mr. Moses? Yes. Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Weiss?
Mr. Ferrisi?
Yes. Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Just a note: Communications are on file of the office of the board secretary. Dr. Sampson, are you ready for your superintendent's report?
I sure am, Mr. Bruno.
Where are you?
I'm over here.
Okay.
I snuck away from you, Mr. Bruno.
I know you did. I don't like that. I get nervous.
So, we're going to open this evening with recognizing the students from our spectacular window painting that took place on October 14th, but just for a few moments, you know, this spectacular window painting event that takes place every year in Freehold Borough is, you know, I say this every year, is one of the best events of the year that this district has. And it's a true representation of our students who get out and about in the community. It's not even just about putting the artwork on the windows of the local vendors. It's really an opportunity for the community to see our students in their own environment and interact with them. And it's just such a different experience, and it's one of those things, I think, sets the Freehold Regional High School District apart. But it wouldn't be possible without this spectacular committee, many of whom will be here this evening. You know, Roger Kane, who's the chairman, Judy Guy, Tracy Moriarty, Michael McCall Federici, who Federici's donate, I don't know how many pizzas every year, and of course, Mrs. Kane, who helps make it all work. But it's a ton of work, and Annette Piazza, who does a ton of work behind the scenes. But it's such a wonderful opportunity, and it's really, you know, I'm not going to steal your thunder, Mr. Kane, but it's something that, I think, sets this community apart, and I feel fortunate to be a part of. Some circumstances this year, I couldn't be there, which was certainly not my choice. So I'm going to call up Roger Kane, who is the chairman of the Freehold Halloween Spectacular Committee, and Mr. Kane, you can take it from there.
The Halloween Window Painting Contest is probably, without question, the oldest tradition that we have in Freehold. Freehold Borough is a community that is steeped in tradition, and the Halloween Window Painting we have, it goes back to the, we have pictures of it, in the 1940s. We have a picture of students painting windows in the 1940s. So this is probably one of our longest-lasting traditions, and we could not do it without the support of Dr. Sampson and the board. The board has always been super to us. Board members come out and they see the kids, but as Dr. Sampson says, it's probably one of the most interesting interactions between students and store owners and people walking by. As I said before, it's probably one of the best advertisements for students that there is. People get a chance to see these students, these children, in action, and it's just unbelievable. So tonight, we have Tracy Moriarty and Judy Guy, my wife Barbara, who's the chair of window painting, and so, and Lisa Tiedemann is here, Rich Kane is here, all members of the committee, but some of us have been doing it for about 30 years, and we're getting tired. Not saying we're getting old, but we're getting tired. So it's time for the new blood to take over. So I would like to, and we're not going anywhere, we'll be around, but our new, we have lots of new young people moving into the borough, and they're very enthusiastic, and we found one that was very, very enthusiastic. She brought back the Fun and Hay rides. I'd like to introduce Toni Field. Toni, could you come up for a second? Toni has lots of friends in the borough, and she's very active in the Arts Council and things like that. So when we asked her with her new ideas and stuff if she would chair the spectacular committee, she graciously accepted. So Toni is going to be our new chair. You'll see us all around, we'll still support everything, make sure the transition is smooth, and whatever Toni doesn't know, I hope we can answer. But you want to say something?
I just want to say thank you so much. I'm honored to be a part of this committee. I'm honored to be the chairperson, and I feel so at home with all of you guys. I love you guys already. So thank you, and the students, you guys are amazing. I'm an artist myself, your talent is beautiful, and thank you to the board, and I'm just so grateful. Thank you so much.
Toni will be presenting to the student winners. So that's Judy and Tracy. And Dr. Sampson introduced Michael Federici. We give the students lunch, and it's all Federici's pizza, which is a treat. You know, it's endorsed by New Springsteen, that pizza, so I guess it's feeling soft.
Good evening. We're going to start with the presentation of the Honorable Mention Awards. We have Freehold Township High School. The principal is Dr. Alicia Salsa. The painting was "The Creation of a Skeleton." The window was "The Habitat for Humanity." The students, if you could come up, please, to accept our awesome award. We have Daniella Nevin, Daniella Tullis, and Isabella Tullis. The teacher is Dierja Bova. Is there a teacher here? Oh, we have to go through something, because they have a... Thank you. Our second Honorable Mention comes from Cold Snack High School. The principal is Dr. Brian Donahue. The painting is "McGreeve Alien." The window was at the Headmaster's Barbershop. And the students are Brianna Harvey and Adrian Gonzalez. The teacher is Lauren Hadman, and the art supervisor is Dierja Bova. All right. Our teachers are accepting tonight on behalf of the students that were unable to make it. Our third Honorable Mention tonight comes from Freehold High School. The principal is Dr. Lavetta Ross. The painting was "Let's Play a Game." The window was at the Freehold Borough Hall. The students are Jillian Butch and Grace Shae. The teacher was Jenna Mazetta and Daniel Finaldi, and the art supervisor is Brian Sitsin. Thank you. Now we're going to present our third second first-place awards. In third place, we have Marrow High School. The principal is David Leekley. The painting was Frankenstein with Pizza, and that was at Stefano's Pizzeria. The student is Madison Chalmers. The teacher is Lauren Fraser, and the art supervisor was Jane Goldstein. Our second place prize goes to Cold Snack High School. The principal is Dr. Brian Donahue. The painting is Cheshire of the Cat. The window was at Wonderland Smoke Shop. The students are Joseph Portello and David Tuschman. The teacher is Laura Hadman, and the art supervisor is Dierja Bova. And our first place prize goes to Manalton High School. Principal is Michael Dillon. The painting is Till Death Do Us Hark. The window was at J. H. Steinex. The students are Lily Cronin and Sophia Park. Teacher is Robert Andressia. Art supervisor was Joseph Ayakula. And as the first place high school, they also get the overall trophy to take back for the year. All right. And Barbara Kane has something to say.
Good evening. I'd just like again to say thank you very much, Dr. Sampson, the board of ed, to the teachers and supervisors, the students who have just moved in such a wonderful, wonderful way. I'd like to thank all the members of the Freehold Spectacular Committee who were here supporting us tonight, and Michael Federici, our sponsor. And it has been said, and it's a compliment, but people that don't understand really what goes into all of this, have said, oh, well, the window painting, it just rolls out. Well, I'd love to tell them that it doesn't just roll out. It has many details that people don't understand. We see so much goes on behind the scenes, so much planning, so much checking, so much detail from beginning to end. It began in April with bids that are set forward by the regional district, and we planned from April, and here we are tonight, closing it up. So with that said, I would like to thank two special people who assist in the efforts. The first, I'd like to bring up Rebecca Cola Castro, because she has assisted in one detail, and I would like to thank her publicly tonight. And last thanking of the night is, last, not what it means the least, a person who just keeps everything going on the original end of it. She gives the master plan, she sees everything, she catches things if they're not sort of right. She is a support that I cannot even begin to express my gratitude to her. She's my right hand when it comes to the day, and I always know it's going to roll out, because of Annette Piazza. She said she was going to hide in a corner, but she did. A lot of corners. Don't keep your heart so cold, you. Thank you, thank you, and we may have a few more. Thank you.
Kane, we're going to continue with our superintendent's report.
Yes, yes, yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bruno. So obviously, November 2nd was a huge day for the Freehold Regional High School District. We passed a referendum, I think, for the first time in probably multiple decades. And for those of you who know the journey that the district has been on, with the Senate Bill 2 reductions, it's been a long road for the school district. This was our third attempt at a referendum, and, you know, we listened to our public and we listened to feedback, and we really pared it down to really what amounts to just bread and butter roofing and paving needs across the district, to the $14.6 million. But the wonderful part of that was that the state had agreed, and those projects all qualified for 40% coverage from the state of New Jersey, and so our voters responded, our community responded. The referendum passed in every single community. It passed by a 59% to 41% margin. I think we had on a pool of, I think there were 150,000 or so registered voters across the regional district, there's a 43% turnout, which, believe it or not, is actually high for an election. As a social studies teacher, that's a sad indictment on some other things, but it was a very high turnout. And for perspective, you know, the second referendum that we put out had almost passed. It was 51 to 49%, and there were a total of 31,000 votes cast in that election. Only about 1,000 votes were the difference between passing or not at that point in time. This referendum, this time around, had 38,000 yes votes to 26,000, so a margin of 12,000 votes on a pool of about 65,000. So it was a resounding affirmation from our larger school community area. And I just want to take a moment to thank the board members, thank the administrators who are here this evening, and thank our community, because it was an awful lot of work. It was years in the making. The past several months were really intense, and it doesn't eliminate S2, where we're losing $30 million. But what it does do is it allows us to meet these critical infrastructure needs without having to dip into the programs for students here, which is what drives all of us, right? So I'm thankful, I know that the board is thankful, and just from a timeline perspective, what that roofing and paving looks like across the six high schools is really, will be done over the next two years. We'll be starting that work pretty much this summer with a couple buildings with the roofing and others with paving. We're not going to do roofing and paving simultaneously on any high school, but we are going to, there will be work being done at each of our six schools starting this summer. And there's still a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes. Mr. Weiss, if you want to just, if you give a thumbnail sketch of that, I'd appreciate. I know that Mr. Messinger was to give the finance committee report, but was unexpectedly unable to make it this evening, so if you could, we can go right to financing. Let Mr. Weiss just go through some of the timelines.
Sure. So the execution of this is really two tracks. The shorter-term track is the funding piece, right? The other track is construction. So Finance Committee met on Monday to take a look at both tracks and what the timeline looks like. On the funding side, right now, we're meeting with bond council, financial advisors, and speaking to rating agencies in preparation for a bond sale in December. We anticipate to close on the bonds, have the final closing on December 21st, but before the end of the calendar year, which is our target. There's a resolution on the agenda tonight, board, that authorizes everything that needs to happen between now and then. It authorizes your professionals and your administration to go ahead and execute what they need to execute. So I will report back to the board once that's over, and I expect it to go smooth. On the construction side, we've spent a considerable amount of time prior to the referendum, but also this week, we also sat down with our architect professionals and our director of facilities here, assistant director who runs Point on Roofs for us. And our objective was to identify which roofing areas or paving areas were the most urgent, and then plan out the logistics to have this happen over the next two years, primarily the next two summers. So as Dr. Sampson said, all six schools will be seeing either roofing or paving work for both summers ahead of us. So we've made some excellent progress on that today, and we'll be finalizing those decisions so that specifications that will go out to bid can be finalized, and that's a hefty amount of work on the architect's end, so that roofers and painters know exactly what they're bidding on. The advertisement for bid, the acceptance of bids, and the work that you have to go through after that to make sure the bids are compliant will happen in January and February. So the March 10th board meeting, you can expect resolutions recommending awards for both roofing and paving for the first summer of work. So we covered that in finance, and we'll continue to work through finance on those. The other item that we discussed in finance was the audit, and so this time of year, the district is under a financial audit that's performed over the district for fiscal year ending June 30th. And the timelines, the state sets the timelines for when those final products are due, down to the state audited financial statements. So we're moving through that now. The Finance Committee, as they do every year, will meet with the auditor in January, and the audit will be presented by John Swisher subsequently in March. Okay? So, I'm sorry, in February. So the board will hear that report then. And that's the extent of what we covered in finance.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Dr. Sampson?
Yeah, just a few more items. We had an excellent junior college planning night last week at Manalton High School, where we had just an overview of the process. You know, our college specialist, Mr. Stone, and Dr. Donovan, our administrative supervisor, died of supervisory services, really put that together. It was, we had representatives from Rutgers, from Bucknell, from UPenn, from Middlebury, and from NYU, just talking about the application process. And I think it was a packed house, and so, you know, each of our, each of our high schools host one of those evening functions related to sort of the college planning, college and career planning process over the course of the year. Mr. Patiki was terrific at Manalton in running that, so it was a wonderful turnout. And we also, this is the time of year where we go through, we usually do a presentation on our Violence and Vandalism Report. We're not this evening because we're just going through, it's always lagged behind, so it's from January 2020 to June 2021. January 21 to June 21, which is really still at the height of COVID, so most school districts, like most school districts, our numbers were suppressed from what they would normally be. One of the things that we always point out to folks is that, you know, we have 10,400 teenagers, and sometimes, you know, you need to help teenagers make better decisions. Sometimes teenagers make mistakes. A couple years ago, when we reported out these numbers, it was interesting, a reporter from the patch reported just the numbers, and we said, but we're, you know, we're a high school district, we don't have a K-8, and so, you know, kindergartners aren't necessarily, you know, doing some of these things. And he actually retracted the story and then ran it as a high school-only number piece, and we were one of the safest school districts in the state of New Jersey. So from January to June 2021, we had a total of seven instances of violence across the six high schools and the 10,500 students. We had 10 issues of substance abuse, and we had a total of nine HIBs at that point in time. Those numbers were low, actually, and suppressed due to COVID. This year, as we opened our doors in September, our building principals and our district administrators are working very diligently with our faculty and staff to provide additional support for students, obviously, additional counseling, additional resources. We're spending, you know, a significant chunk of our federal dollars toward some of these resources. And what we're seeing is that there are consequences for keeping schools closed. You know, students, especially with ninth graders, we've seen a disproportionate impact to the ninth graders who've come in in terms of doing, taking, doing actions that you don't normally see at the high school, that you would more likely see at the middle school. So we're working with that grade level in particular to make sure that we're helping students re-acclimate continuously this year to full-time school, what that looks like. You know, I've said it, I've said it before, our schools were shut down for far too long. They were shut down... They were shut down oftentimes when they did not need to be. And there are consequences for kids when that occurs. And so I'm happy that we're full-time again this year. I'm happy that every student is back in the building and we're working very, very diligently to make sure that all of our students get acclimated in a way to what, you know, the traditional school day looks like because it was far too many months of not having that opportunity.
Then you've just been going through a full day too.
Complete. That concludes my report, Mr. Brown.
Thank you. We do not have any other reports tonight. Mr. Voice, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are, there is an addendum on the back table, page seven. And this resolution gives the administration authorization to, well, first accepts the American Recovery Plan Act, or Part S, money that has been allocated to Freehold Regional, and also authorizes the administration to submit that grant application. And that's due down there next Wednesday. In addition to that, I have two changes for existing resolutions. One is, the first is G one, which is approval of resignations under Jason Longo. The resignation date should be changed to twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-one. And then on G twelve, approval of six-period teaching assignments. Upper Freehold High School, the spelling of the last name of Jennifer Brzukie should be changed, as noted. It should be changed to B R Z U C K H, so that was just a misspelling change and that's all I had.
Thank you. We have one speaker tonight for public participation, Sarah Rosbach. Sarah? Hi, Sarah. Can you come right to the podium? Where are you from?
Uh, I'm from Freehold High School.
You're in Hattie Allen?
Uh, I actually just graduated.
Oh, congratulations.
Yeah, you're on, you're on.
You're on.
It's on?
Yeah.
Oh, it's on?
We can hear you.
Okay. So make sure. All right, so good evening, Administration. My name is Sarah Rosbach and I'm a humanities alumni from Howell High School. As I just said, I graduated in June of this year and I like to preface by saying that I'm extremely grateful for the education that I have received here and I truly believe that my academics were improved during my time at Howell. I'm thankful for everything done to get me to where I am, but today I want to look past the outstanding academic record of this district and dive into what occurs in the hallways of each building every day. I like to believe that when I left this school, the problems I was aware of were linked with me. But I still hear reports of bullying. I still recognize that harassment many students suffer. I still see the plethora of petitions against the unpunished assault. I still hear the cries of self-harm echo unnoticed. I'm here today because I wholeheartedly believe more needs to be done for the well-being and mental health of our students. I must admit that how often these events occur frustrates me beyond belief, but I do not wish to come here and simply complain or point fingers. I want to offer solutions to what I believe will improve students' everyday life. To start, it was frequent I would hear the phrases, "I hate my life" or "I want to kill myself." And it was equally as frequent for these phrases to be ignored by teachers and administration. I fail to understand how an adult can hear a student's distress and do nothing about it. This district needs to better train all the faculty to deal with situations such as these. So when a student makes life-threatening remarks in this building, it is handled properly and serious charges are not dismissed. This brings me to my second point. From what I've witnessed, when students attempt to get help from the school, it is not handled well. A target is essentially placed on their back and our soul fears crumble from this increased pressure. It is okay to not be okay, but it is not okay to implement an idea that students must always be happy or always perform well. Students are not a system to guide in one direction if you believe that a certain method is applicable to every child. This furthest mentality of unworthiness that so many students possess has no follow of their own. A child should not be disappointed when they wake up every morning and a child should feel safe going to school. There needs to be confidentiality for secret reporting motivating students to seek help for their friends in a system which needs to reach more students. Anonymous reporting should be shared with students and emphasized by faculty. This leads us to the direct matter of bullying, harassment and assault. This undeniably and unfortunately happens at every high school. I believe it un itself, however, to sweep these events out of the spotlight and not recommend the situation properly. If a student conducts an act of violence criminal, it should be treated as such. Students are at that age where they are going to ask questions and they are going to want answers. Because they are young, should not alleviate them of the right to know. In a similar sense, I would like to mention social media, which while it can occur outside of the school's perimeter, it intoxicates students' mentality when they enter the school and distracts them from the academia canon. Social media needs to be regulated more throughout the district and more concrete punishments put into place for things including cyberbullying. Just because it does not occur while a student is in school does not relieve the school of responsibility. Students spend a bulk of their time here and it should not be treated lightly. More effort needs to be put into correctly answering students' questions and demonstrating to students the effects of their actions and the consequences that follow. In order to accomplish this, there should be assemblies for students to understand the consequences for their actions in school and what the real-world offenses are. There should also be reformation programs enforced and associated issue with punishment. To summarize, faculty needs to be better trained in the realm of mental health and more resources need to be offered, not just when the wind blows towards mental health movement, but frequently. The way the district deals with struggling students needs to be reformed and not brushed under the rug. Finally, and most importantly, students need to be made aware of the consequences to their actions. What goes on in the schools is worse than what parents and administration knows or accepts and I am here to bring this to light. Knowing the resources the school offers and the significance of their choices will create not only a better school environment, but improve the lives of these young adults. The pandemic has only worked in these circumstances for students and it is an immediate crisis that we face. I am more than willing to help make these reforms happen so that school returns to place of education and not place of fear and hatred. Thank you.
Sarah, I appreciate you coming out and making these points. And just a couple of things, every student's experience is their own and we would never brush aside something that was threatening somebody's health or safety, nor are we naive enough to think that, I just said, ten thousand four hundred teenagers aren't making mistakes, doing things inappropriately. We do have an anonymous reporting system that's used quite often actually and we do act on that. We have restorative practice training that's been going on for two years now for several hundred of our staff members in order to better engage students in that conversation. You made the example of a student saying, "I'm not worthy, I'm struggling." And so that work's been going on for a couple of years now to just lift all staff members up in terms of understanding in that moment how you might react to that. We've paid for additional counseling both during and after school for students. So that's been part of where we've put our money the past couple of years as well, through with a partnership with an outside group. And so, and we honestly report, when you look at our district compared to some other districts with the numbers and you see our reporting mechanism, we own what isn't working well in the district and are always trying to improve that for all students, right? Because kids struggle. The social media piece, we take a very serious stance on cyberbullying. There's, you know, it is, social media in many instances, while there are tons of valuable elements to it, there are also tons of really dangerous elements to it. And it's something that we're constantly either monitoring, we're taking part on. And I can tell you that the school administrators and myself spend a great deal of our day, every single day, dealing with social media posts, threats, inappropriate statements. And a lot of it is working with the individual student and helping them understand either what they said and the damage it could cause. But from a discipline standpoint, when somebody does something like that, you know, there's counseling that's mandated with that and follow-up. And that's part of the discipline area. And so it's not, it's not just punitive. It's, you know, we look, it's our role, right, to help teenagers make better decisions and learn from the poor choices that they might make in a moment. And unfortunately, more often than not, a fifteen-year-old student is often parroting what they hear at home, what they hear from, you know, another adult in the household. And so it's also, we often find ourselves working with parents as well about why something was inappropriate and what that looks like. It's not, it's not easy to be a teenager in two thousand twenty-one. It had, you know, and I think, you know, The New York Times had a great article a couple of years ago and I've referenced it a couple of times because it really resonated. And it said, you know, "Students today often feel like a mistake is the fatal mistake," right? Like you can't come out of it. And that puts inordinate pressure on kids. And then kids act out as a result of that pressure feeling that, especially around feelings of self-worth, feelings of where do you fit in. And with the social media piece, prior to social media, if a child was being bullied, it left at the schoolhouse, right? Kids went home. Now you cannot, it is pervasive, we know that, right? It is constant. But we do, we also have software across the district that monitors every student's account in the sense with trigger words, any threats, any suicide ideations. And we are acting on that at all hours of the night as well. So we certainly aren't putting our heads in the sand and saying that, you know, kids are kids and so on. You know, we're looking at it from across the spectrum. I, you know, I have two teenagers myself at home and I have three actually, one just turned thirteen, so I have three now. But the, and I see the types of things that they're exposed to on a daily basis is fundamentally different from my own experience. I don't pretend to always understand it, but I do, I do know that, you know, I expect the schools to take an active role in helping move them through a lot of that. And we take that same challenge seriously here as well. And I, we tell students, we have class meetings at the start of every school year and, you know, where we find most of our information comes from students. You know, students come forward, say, "This is going on." We're not privy to somebody's Snapchat. We're not always, you know, we don't always know what the communication is and we don't know what somebody's saying to somebody else under their breath or in passing in the hallways. But, you know, we don't, I think we, I think we take an honest approach to trying to mitigate that at all times and trying to improve it. And there is an awful lot, there are a lot of, there's a lot of work and a lot of resources being deployed across the district to continue to improve that. Sure.
I really do feel like the students need to be made aware of these resources and I don't think that they are. And I remember at the start of the pandemic, because I was still a tenant at Howell, how we were receiving emails regarding the resources that were being offered. And then suddenly we come to school and those emails stop as if the mental health doesn't matter anymore, as if because we are in school, the problem's fixed. And if I may, I remember either my sophomore or junior year, my vice principal had an assembly regarding HIBs and punishment and what would happen if you do these things. But that was the only assembly we received. And, I mean, it's high school and granted it was not, but I think if done in the right fashion, it would be very effective on students to understand that what they do has consequences. And after going to school for four years in this district, I don't think that's made clear to students that there are these resources and that what you do does have consequences. And I think, I completely agree. I always feel like when I came to the school, it was looking for ways to improve, but I do feel like these are ways the schools can improve. And I actually looked through the anonymous reporting, because I remember hearing about it every so often. And when I looked at it, it was after school hours and it said that it's only open during school hours. And it said like we had a call, not even one, if it was an emergency or something. I feel like anonymous reporting should be open twenty-four seven. It really shouldn't matter if the schools are open or not. And I feel like confidentiality reporting would also be helpful. And I think another issue we face is students coming forward with issues and we have to break this stigma within the district that coming forward is a toxic thing.
Sarah, just so you know, I'm excited to work here. And just as a board member, we, just tonight, we got quite a few HIBs. And some of them are about bullying, some of them were about touching appropriately, but a lot were bullying. And just not one high school, but all six. So it is the worst hour because of the pandemic and the impact of the building. But we're looking to the hotline, because we got three things from that hotline just this fall that brought kids to expulsion. So it's tools that we definitely use and our administration uses it. So we'll have to see when it closes down and hope we respect that you're here tonight, you're our, you're Matthews grad and program that we love here at Howell High School. But we do see a lot of HIBs and a lot of them is bullying. And just this fall, I wish I didn't forget the name of it, at Central Office, we were training our teachers, it was a group from Howell County, it's a man, we were training our teachers in how to deal with this stuff in the classroom, the bullying, before it gets to bullying. And I just can't believe that he was training.
Restorative IRP, International Restorative Practices.
And our teachers are involved in that. Facilitators are taught, our teachers, our writing counselors. And so we do work on that and we have to get better, of course. But, you know, with ten thousand plus kids, we do pretty well with it. But we'll look into that reporting because we do get a lot of information from that anonymous before.
We're careful with that, so there's some report distinctions there. We don't want some student reporting that they're thinking about harming themselves and nobody's on the other end of that. And so when there's not somebody who we trust is going to see it in the moment, we want them to call for help because we don't want to give that false sense of security. Hey, you're reporting it, somebody's going to be at your door or something. So there's, it's more nuanced than that. I think the short answer here is just that we have ten thousand five hundred teenagers. We recognize that. The district is certainly aware that not every child's experience is great when they're around either certain groups or other kids. Kids do harmful things to other kids at times, especially teenagers, you know, who are finding themselves, right? And so there is an awful lot of work that goes on and I appreciate you coming forward and sharing your journey, right, in the district. And I would certainly know and I'm sure that Mr. Robertman will reach out to you tomorrow and talk to you about specifics, but it is, it is a constant, it is a constant emphasis here in this district. And I'll share with you, we had a Snapchat post at one of our high schools last week that probably took five or six of us two or three days to unwind in terms of how we were working through it, what that looks like. That's what happens every single time one of these things comes to light. So it's, you know, you can't, and you can't stay out in front of this, right? That's the, that's the difficult nature. And a lot of those change.org petitions are frankly inaccurate. And they're, and sometimes a kid will post something that is completely misleading and doesn't represent what actually happened in the building. And oftentimes rumor does rule the day in terms of what did or didn't occur once you did it. But somebody will take it and post it and the truth doesn't matter at that point in time. It just matters what people are seeing. And so we're always trying to help kids make better decisions around those types of things and certainly help anybody through that who's on the receiving end of something that might be harmful or inappropriate or is feeling that themselves just from feeling the pressure. You know, high school, and I've said it a million times, has somehow become a full-time job. Right, you know, and that's what it's like and it's a little bit of a pressure cooker sometimes for students. And we're trying to, you know, we do other, we make other decisions like even moving to the decile ranking to pull pressure off of kids. You know, so it wasn't that, "I'm twenty-seven, you're twenty-eight, I'm in a decile." We did that years ago just to remove, just to take the air out of the balloon of some of the GPA pressure that kids were feeling, you know? And so, you know, we are always at least looking at, taking into consideration those things and we certainly welcome student voice in that. The principals meet with students, I come to every high school every month and meet with groups of students and ask them about their experiences so that we can act on it. The student voice, your experience is the most important piece to that, right? We're not, we're not the students, we're the adults making decisions. We don't always know how they play out to a particular student within the classroom or within the hallways or after school or what that looks like. And sometimes the only way we get at that is by talking to kids.
Oh, sure, sure. I mean, I do as much speak about my own experience. I actually had an amazing time at Howell. I thought it was like the best school ever, I mean, it's time to try. So I think a large issue I personally face is that appears a return of need for help not realizing the resources the school offers. And I think that's not good for young children to become each other's therapists in that manner and they should know these resources. And I think, I really do think those emails getting sent out, beginning in pandemics, parents and children like, I'm sure that made a big difference for. a big difference for so many people, and I just, I just, I just don't know how to stop.
Thank you. Are you all impressed? Thank you for coming tonight, and we'll take these, we take this very seriously, so.
We'll, we'll follow up.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome back. Okay. Um, now I have a motion, this is personnel now, personnel and negotiations, I have a motion to take G1 through G13.
Motion, second.
I hear first.
Yeah, I love this.
Any discussion on this personnel negotiations? Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Now we're going to do program operations, buildings, transportation, and the physical plant, H1 through I2. I need a motion?
Move.
I need a second?
Second. Mrs. Capiello, Mr. Bruno, Mr. Perisi.
Discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Okay, under Education Program and Administration, J1 through K4, I need a motion?
Motion.
I need a second?
Second. Mrs. Hagley, Mr. Perisi.
Any discussion? I hear no discussion, roll call, please.
Mrs. Capiello?
Yes.
Mrs. Hagley?
Yes.
Mrs. Lavin?
Yes.
Mr. Moses?
Yes.
Mrs. Finelli?
Yes.
Mr. Perisi?
Yes.
Mr. Bruno?
Yes. Any old business discussed tonight?
Mr. Bruno, exactly, give a school board opinion.
Yes, do it right there, that'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, so, the New Jersey School Board Association has their virtual workshop October 26th and the 28th. Any board members, uh, that, uh, would still like to access any training and resources that they have until the 28th, you can reach out to, to me or someone in central administration that should probably help, uh, help you plug in, and there's a lot of, um, great workshops that you can watch, um, they're all about an hour long, there's several dozen, um, so I would encourage anyone that's interested, uh, to check in with that. Uh, the School Board Association's delegate assembly is, uh, this weekend, uh, I do not see any resolutions, surprisingly, so I, um, I do not plan on attending. Um, this past Tuesday was the Monmouth County School Board Association meeting, uh, at the Colts Neck Inn, uh, Mr. Bruno and I attended, and, uh, Dr. Sampson was there as well, he gave a presentation on how to continue virtual learning, um, and, uh, he discussed the district's implementation, uh, onto one virtual platform, uh, prior to the pandemic, uh, was very helpful, uh, in the district pivoting to remote learning, because we're all on one platform. So, I want to thank Dr. Sampson for coming to that meeting on Tuesday night and giving that presentation, you did a great job, and, uh, the only other comment that I want to make, because I just want to congratulate, uh, Mr. Bruno and Mr. Moses on being elected to another term on the board, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. And, um, I just want to thank everyone for voting for the referendum. I mean, I don't know the last time it passed, and I just remember maybe 2,000?
It's before that.
Because I know we've got, we've got all that stuff done, I know all the additions here are done, so was that like before 2,000? So, thank you to the, uh, people who voted, and the principals and the administration worked very hard on that, so, um, I just want to present, um, Diane Capiello with her tenure pin, um, wearing a quick belt, which is presented to you Tuesday night, and I took it for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other new business?
I, uh, forebide from me, Mr. Bruno, to extend the meeting. I just want to thank, uh, Jason Longo, who is, uh, leaving Freehold Borough as the Sika for his hard work, and sorry to see him go.
Thank you. And, uh, one of my pals here at Lea Hardway, special ed teacher, um, she is retiring, so I, I wish her Godspeed and, um, a great retirement to Lea Hardway, she's a special ed teacher, club advisor, class advisor, and she's done a lot, so, good luck to Lea. Anything else?
One more thing, Mr. Bruno, we'd be remiss if we didn't wish the public a happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving. Happy Thanksgiving.
Wish, we hope everybody had a happy Thanksgiving.
Now I have a motion to.
Motion?
Mr. Moses?
Mr. Moses, a second?
Second.
We'll do you a favor. Aye. Aye. And happy Thanksgiving.